This meeting is in order, would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting on the Seward County Government Body. The City of Seward provides by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure and meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. The participant sign-in sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenters shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine if any appropriate response shall be made. The City of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome back, Eric Camper, Brent Pike, Singleton, Schmidt, Hans.
Alright, the first item this evening are introductions. First, I'd like to introduce our city attorney this evening is Christina Usher filling in for Kelly Hofschneider.
Hello.
Thank you for being with us. And then also I have Katrina Goldsmith as the Aging Services Commission Assistant. You know, just stand up and wave. Welcome, thank you. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting if you don't want to, but you're welcome to. Would you want to say anything at all, or this is your moment, this is it?
Alright, that's good.
Okay, thank you, welcome. Item number two, consideration of approval of draft minutes of October 6, 2015.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Item three, we have, we have three resignations to bring your attention. We have three aides accept the resignation of Thomas Binogle from the Planning Commission and Seward Community Redevelopment Authority. Item B is the accept the resignation of David Cum from the LBA 40 Sales Tax Application Review Board for Economic Development. And three is the accept the resignation of Mary Meyer from the Civil Service Commission. We should probably do each of these separately. So we'll have a motion to accept Thomas Binogle's resignations.
Second.
Motion and second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Urgent motion to accept the resignation of David Cum.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. I urgent motion to accept the resignation of Mary Meyer.
So moved.
Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you. Item four, consideration of consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Chris?
John, just quick, on the code violation report, how often do we update that?
I think we do it just about, I know we do it once a month, but I think we do it every meeting.
I just look and I don't see updates on stuff that's been on this report since 2008 either. I like to see an update on it or take it off the report. I'm talking code violations.
There's a spreadsheet.
The open code violation report, John? There's one in there from 2008, updated in 2012 on...
Well, we certainly have done them since then.
Well, it's your spreadsheet on the open codes. I bring this up every now and then, and it doesn't seem to go anywhere.
Oh, I don't have that. I'll make sure we get them updated.
So is that still a monthly thing you do, or quarterly?
Yeah, it should be a monthly thing.
Okay.
You've been getting it in your packet monthly.
Do you just make sure, go through, make sure the ones that are, that they're all current for the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Thanks, John.
Any other guests?
Just a question on the claims. The Seward LITI, that's the comprehensive property insurance, right? For 26678?
Yes.
And I was just curious, how has that, or did that change from last year's total? And I know last year we kind of went out for bids on that. And I just thought it was way less than that last year.
It was like 229 last year, is that right, Bonnie? And then we've added some things, you know, some vehicles and stuff, which changed it, but it did go up, so.
So when, and just refresh my memory because I don't remember, but last year when we did go out for bids, were we just doing that last year, or were we going to do that every year? Or was it for like, we're going to stay with whoever we get for like three years? Or was there, I can't remember if there was any kind of a...
We don't typically have a term for those. We typically don't go out for bids every year just because it's labor intensive, and we typically don't see big jumps from year to year. We typically will stick with, like in this case with this company, unless we saw a jump or a projected jump for the next year, that would then cause us to pause and say, okay, should we go out and look and see, to see if this is just a jump with this company, or is this like an industry-wide jump? So it doesn't matter where you go, you're going to see that jump. So that's what most of our, I guess, contracts that we have, we typically follow that pattern. But the council's welcome, I mean, if you see something that hasn't been, gone out for a bid in a while, and you think there might be savings there, just bring it to our attention and we can see if we can work it in.
Yeah, no, on this one, I guess, and I don't know if that's true to everybody, but I just personally would just like to see something about what justifies a $30,000 jump or whatever.
I did compare it to last year, and majority of this is workers' compensation increase. Because of the claims and they go back three years. That is the majority of this. Besides the increased newer vehicles, we added some vehicles.
So every year you'll drop a year off of that three-year look back. So hopefully eventually, if we don't have future claims or as many, then we'll come out ahead eventually.
You normally kind of look at every three years doing something like a property casualty, you know, this type of insurance. Because it is a big job to go out and the insurance companies don't want a bid every year. It's a big deal for them too.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on item four, which is the consideration of consent agenda? We do have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Item five, this is a public hearing, 7:00 p.m., consideration of preliminary and final plat of pitch addition. And John Hughes is here to present for the council. And then the item five A would be the consideration of ordinance approving the final plat of the pitch addition. John?
Yeah, basically, this is a lot line adjustment. These two houses have been administratively replatted previously, about 15 years ago. Basically, the bottom, the southern house, it says 864, they actually moved the property line between the two to facilitate its sales. Since they did an administrative replat before, they can't do it to give them the same property, so we have a preliminary final plat, but it's basically a lot line adjustment.
Okay, any questions for John or comments on this item? It is a public hearing, so I'll take a moment here to ask the public for the public comment portion of this. If anyone in the public would like to comment on this item. Not seeing them from the public, wishing to comment on this item, I will close the public comment portion of this hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, is this just a, this is an ordinance? So unless there's any other questions or comments, I would ask for someone to introduce the ordinance.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Alright. An ordinance to approve the plat titled Pitch Edition, City of Seward, Seward County, Nebraska, as herein after set forth, located on Fifth Street between Hillcrest Drive and Cedar Street, to provide for publication of this ordinance in capital form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2015-16. The title is hereby approved and a motion to suspend with statutory rule.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes.
I'm moving. Thank you. Welcome back.
Go ahead, this way. Now, this is ordinance number 2015-16. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Saying none. The question is, your ordinance number 2015-16 be finally passed and adopted? Please register your votes. Please display the votes. This is the only ordinance for this evening, so I'll ask for one final motion to make this ordinance a part of the permanent record.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Alright, thank you. Item number six, a public hearing, 7:00 p.m., consideration of special use permit from Pamela Hampel, 1075 Augusta Drive to operate a hair salon at Residence. John Hughes.
Yeah, Pamela Hampel was basically submitted a special use permit, so she can run that hair kind of place operation out of her home under home occupation. We currently allow that under subsection 6A, Home Occupation Supplemental Use Regulations. But it does require a special use permit, and that's why we're here. One of the caveats of the home occupation thing for this particular occupancy is she has to have separate in-rest and be-rest for customers to go in and out. She should combine those.
Alright, John, any questions or comments from the council? This is a public hearing, so I'll ask if the public, for the public comment portion of this, would have any interest in commenting on this item? Pamela, would you like to say? You don't have to, I didn't want to put you on the spot, but you're here, so I wanted to give the opportunity.
Well, I guess I can. I just want to say that, I don't know, this is probably informal, but I've just been a hairstylist for 25 years. I work in the salon. I have always loved working in the salon, but I came to a point in my life where I didn't have to work for myself now, and I needed to be there for my teenage daughter, and I need to work around my schedule and her schedule. But I have a passion and I have a love for my clients, and I love doing hair. So this is very important to me. And I just want you guys to know that if I wasn't a hairstylist for the salon, I wouldn't love it as much as I do, and I really need this.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Anything else from the public wish to comment on this item? Saying no one else, now we'll close the public comment portion of this public hearing. Any other questions or comments from the council? I believe this is just a motion for this item.
I move to approve the special.
We have a motion to approve the special use permit. Need a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Item seven, this is a citizen, this is an item that was brought to our attention by a citizen who was requesting an agenda item. This is regarding a cell tower, or thus cell tower setup and locations around Seward. I believe he's unable to make it this evening, but John, did you, you said you had some information on this? Yeah, this citizen came to me and, you know, it's his own assumption that the cell tower, that he is complaining is causing some interference with his day-to-day lifestyle. So, and that's all I had, it's his assumption. And he asked, I think, for the council to do something about this, but we wanted to give the council an opportunity to at least hear his concerns, and if there is intrigue by the council to address this somehow, just let us know. Like, obviously discuss it now, or contact us at a later time, and then we will relay this to Norm and see how, if that satisfies his concerns, or how we want to move forward. So that's all we have, yeah, so.
Do we need to table it or anything, or?
Well, we've kind of discussed it, so. There's no action to take on it, so.
Is there anything that we can do to verify if there is a concern?
Well, I know he had presented some information, I believe that was given out to the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
The part of the concern with cell towers is that it's regulated primarily by FCC, and so there really isn't as much when it comes to the location. We have dealt as a council in the past with cell tower locations when we had requests for those, and, you know, there's not a whole lot a city can do aside from aesthetics and maybe ground landscaping and that kind of thing. But I don't know that there's anything we can do at this point.
Could we have either Bruce or John follow up just to see if there is a concern?
Yeah, really with Norm.
Or even with, if it's Verizon or whoever it is.
Yeah, I would imagine that Bruce will be following up with Norm, just to let him know that we did discuss this. And John, do you have something to add?
I talked to Mr. Porter, and I expressed to him everything that we put in, and what we're at. He understood all that. I also expressed to him the fact that Verizon is going to be modifying the towers that he's talking about. I don't think they're going to move them whatsoever, and I don't think they're going to go too much higher, but they are putting a lower emission transmitter up on top there. I do not know that for a fact, but that's what's going to be leading to me. Because when I asked them about what they were doing, whether or not they could, needed to buy a permit or not, or have rezoning, they simply are out there just moving some pieces and parts and they're downgrading.
Now, we're not saying there's a correlation between his concerns and what they're doing. It's just that they are going to be doing this, and he has his concerns.
I'd just like to see you follow up on it, if you would.
No.
Okay, yeah, we, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments regarding that issue? Saying none, then we will move on to number eight. This is consideration of street closure, crossing Highway 15 for Chamber of Commerce Annual Holiday Parade Permit, November 28, 2015. I believe Kathy is also here. As you know, when you cross the highway for a parade, it takes on another level of scrutiny that the state requires, and so that's why this is before the council. This is no different than what we would do for the Fourth of July every year, so, go ahead.
Right, hi, Kathy Everett, the Executive Director of the Chamber of Congress. A great group of volunteers are planning the annual Christmas fest and the holiday parade again for November 28. And we have the parade route the same again this year as in previous years, so we would appreciate your support and approval of the street closure.
So we're not required, or we're not responsible for the weather, right?
We're going to put that on your shoulders too.
Are you excited for proclamations or that?
Yes.
I don't know if proclamations work the way you think they work, but.
What do you want, nice weather or snow?
Yeah, nice weather. Are there any questions?
It's snow after November 28.
There you go. Are there any questions or comments?
It's not perusal. Say.
We have a motion and a second for approval, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you. Okay, item number nine is consideration of rejection of bid for Roberts Street Area Distribution Line Upgrade. Senator Garrett is here. Welcome, Garrett.
Thank you, Mayor, Senator to council. Back on September 24th, we opened the bids for the Roberts Street area electrical project, and that's the double spacer cable circuit that runs from west to east, the whole length of Roberts, basically. We only received one bid, and it was at 692,000, significantly higher than our estimate of 450,000. Could mean a couple of things, could mean our estimate was bad, could mean people weren't interested in the project, so we called around and tried to get the, you know, pulse of the contractors and see maybe what had happened. And at the same time, we revisit our estimate, call suppliers for some updates on material quotes, and try to figure out why the big difference. Regarding the apparent lack of interest, it seems that there were some other projects being advertised and contractors were working on that maybe were a little more attractive to them, and I think it's because of a little easier work, so they were concentrating on those, and now they know what results of those were. So we anticipate that those contractors would bid this one if it were re-advertised. And another contractor who misplaced or didn't see the invitation, so that was one side of it. Then the estimate, we dug back through and we found a few things that probably could be caused for adjustment upwards, but nowhere near the difference in the bid, it was more like 12% or so. All that known, we're comfortable recommending that the project be rebid, that you would receive more bids, and it would be more competitive. That could happen really at any time. The one change I think we would make in the specifications or the bid requirements is that we recommended or requested that the work be substantially complete by the end of April of 2016. There really isn't a project driver from the utility standpoint, since it has to be done, that was adequate time, we felt, to do the work. But a couple of contractors, because of work that's lined up, couldn't meet that, and thought that also contributed to them not preparing proposals. So our suggestion, if it is rebid, would be to open that date up, and let them propose what they can do, and consider that as part of the evaluation the next time around.
Thanks, Garrett. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Just a point, related budget, obviously related. So we're moving, I didn't bring my copy of the budget, sorry. I assume we had 450 in the budget for this project?
Yes.
And our revised estimate is 504. Right, you agree with that? Yes.
Thanks, Chris. Is there any other questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the rejection, I guess, is that right?
And to go off for a rebid.
And to go off for the rebid.
So moved.
Second.
So yes means no. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Item number, thanks, Garrett. Item number 10, presentation by Nebraska Public Power District on wholesale power contract. I believe we had a couple representatives here this evening. What's that?
What, everybody?
We loaded up the car and came en masse.
If they fit in the car, bring them, right? It's alright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name's Pat Hope, I'm president and chief executive officer of the Nebraska Public Power District. With me tonight, I have Tom Kent, who's vice president and chief operating officer for the district. We have Ken Curry, vice president and customer services. And you probably all know Chad, the better fours.
Richard Ward.
Richard Ward. We appreciate the opportunity to come down and visit with you this evening. As you know, we're in the process of trying to extend the wholesale power contracts that we have with our customers. And I'd like to give you a little bit of information about why, and really, what kind of a position the district is in. As you can see up on the overhead, we're on the presentations that John's handing out. Wanted to talk about NPBD at a glance, our financial position, how we've been investing ratepayer dollars for the last several years, how competitive is our generation in today's world? Talk about the contract options and features, what's the future hold for us, and our business model, and our focus, whether it's long-term or short-term. At a glance, NPBD is the largest utility in the state of Nebraska. We're a vertically integrated utility. We do it all, we generate, transmit, distribute electricity. Our total 2014 operating revenues were just over a billion dollars, and we own and or operate 33 different generation facilities throughout the state, and we have just around 2,000 full-time employees. We serve 50 municipalities like the City of Seward and 25 rural public power districts with wholesale power, and our service area does cover 86 of Nebraska's 93 counties. So we are truly a border-to-border organization here in the state. This map just gives you an idea of that border-to-border presence. It shows the NPBD retail communities, those are the yellow dots. The municipal electric utilities like the City of Seward, the red dots. And then the purple dots would be the headquarters towns of the rural public power districts that we serve. And we generate power for 403 of Nebraska's 530 cities and villages either directly or indirectly. Here, this gives you just a little bit of an idea of our facilities, a little mosaic showing Gerald Gentleman Station, our Cooper Nuclear Station, some of our hydro facilities, our wind facilities, the Beatrice Power Station, even the Lexington Power Station, which is one of our older gas plants, and the Sheldon Station located near Hallam, Nebraska, which you may have heard earlier this year, we had a big announcement where we'll be converting Sheldon Station from coal, one of the units, from coal to hydrogen. Kind of the first in its kind here in the United States, so we're pretty excited about that. One of the things that, quite frankly, is an advantage for NPBD, even though we are a very capital-intensive organization, and any utility that is in the power generation business is very capital-intensive. You know, if you come to an NPBD board meeting, we typically measure our procurements in terms of millions of dollars. Last month, the NPBD board approved a $9 million project, a Cooper Nuclear Station, that took place in a wet well event in response to the Fukushima event in Japan. So having the dollars on hand, being able to go to the capital markets to get that capital, and then having the relationships and the contracts to back that up is very important. But we also have the advantage that our debt is very front-end loaded, meaning we have a very rapid paydown. And the graph on the right illustrates that. You can see right now, and it breaks it out between our Cooper Station debt, Beatrice Power Station debt, Gentleman Station debt, Nebraska City Two, which we don't actually own, Omaha Public Power District does, but we're a participant in that. And then our other production debt, we have a very rapid paydown. And what that means is, we have capacity, we have the flexibility if something happens in the future. You know, in any business, you never know on a day-to-day basis what might pop up, what kind of challenges you might have. Certainly, there are regulatory challenges out there right now with the Environmental Protection Agency's Clean Power Plan, but we're very well positioned. We also have good bond ratings from the three agencies that we have right our debt. Fitch rates us at A+, Moody's at A1, and S&amp;P at A. We have had rate increases over the last few years. You may have read in the Omaha World-Herald this weekend that the Omaha Public Power District announced a 4% increase for their retail rates. And quite frankly, they cited certainly the first item that we've got here, the impact of soft surplus markets since 2008. The significant decline in natural gas has driven the wholesale price of electricity down to levels that, quite frankly, we haven't seen for quite a few years. For those utilities that have excess generation and have relied on taking that generation to the market and then bringing those margins back to help offset costs so that customers like Seward don't have to pay those, that's been an impact. And PPD recognized that also. But we've adjusted our budgets, and quite frankly, going forward, we're anticipating, at least for the near-term, lower markets. We've continued to make significant investments in the facilities. We've invested almost $600 million at our Cooper Nuclear Station over the years. That plant is running well now, both from what I call an operational perspective and a regulatory perspective. In nuclear power, nothing is ever easy, and you can get in trouble with the regulator just as easily as you can if you throw a blade on a steam turbine. But the plant's running very well right now, Gerald Gentleman Station. Gerald Gentleman Station was described to my board probably two years ago in a board meeting as having the lowest fuel costs in the world. And this was by a consultant out of Kansas City who actually travels the world. I don't know whether we're the lowest cost in the world, I'll settle for North America. But because of our geographic location, the way we buy fuel, the way we've been able to negotiate our fuel prices, I'm pretty comfortable that Gerald Gentleman Station has the lowest price-fuel cost in North America. Beatrice Power Station is the most efficient way that you can burn natural gas. It not only uses combustion turbines, but it also uses heat recovery steam generators. It raises the efficiency to very high levels. And Nebraska City Two, which, as I said earlier, Omaha Public Power District actually owns, has a state-of-the-art plant. has a state-of-the-art plant with all of the latest pollution control mechanisms on it. Coal transportation was a big hitter for us. Probably four or five years ago, the Union Pacific, the contract we had with Union Pacific Railroad expired. And I think that was a 15-year term. Our coal transportation rates went up 75% in one year. That was a pretty big hit for us to absorb. That certainly had an impact. And then, over the last 10 years, whether it's been uranium, whether it's been coal, or whether it's been natural gas, I've seen it go up and down, up and down. There's been significant volatility in all of those. So those are some of the things that have impacted rates in the last 10 years. The EPA's Clean Power Plan. I tell folks that there's going to be a tremendous amount of water going under the bridge before this is settled. The federal government has not even published the final rule in the Federal Register. And so until that happens, it's really not a rule. They said they have a final rule. I think what they're doing is they're concerned that, once they file it in the, print it in the Federal Register, that there will be legal action. There are a lot of folks that have threatened to take legal action against the rule. And the president, as you may know, is headed to Paris, I believe, the first part of December for our Global Climate Summit. And I think he's concerned that if they announced or finalized the rule now, legal action could result in a stay, which would really leave him not much to talk about when he goes to Paris. And so I think, I don't think we'll see this, this rule published for several more weeks. But NPBD's been talking about carbon for years, quite frankly. I can remember all the way back in the early 2000s, quite frankly, when NPBD was talking about carbon. This Clean Power Plan isn't something that, gee, it's now popped up and what are we gonna do? Thinking about carbon factored into the decision to extend Cooper Nuclear Station's license to 2034. Cooper Nuclear Station is a carbon-free resource for us, 700 megawatts. The construction of the Beatrice Power Station. Natural gas produces about 50% of the amount of carbon as burning coal does. That was a key move for us. The NPBD board, many years ago, set a voluntary standard of having 10% of our energy come from new renewables by 2020. And today, we are basically there. We might be just a few megawatts on a nameplate basis short. And then we've continued to pursue our energy efficiency, not only at our power plants, but with our end-use customers. If you look at our portfolio, today, 42% of all of the energy that we produce is carbon-free. Now, that's nuclear energy, that's hydro energy, that's wind energy. 42% of our energy is a no-nevermind as far as the Clean Power Plan goes. We're not gonna have to be concerned about that. It positions us pretty well for compliance down the road. You know, if we do have to add renewables, as we all know, Nebraska can be a windy place. And there are opportunities for us to continue to capitalize on that. And Sheldon Station, as I mentioned earlier, converting that to hydrogen unit one, or unit two, converting that to hydrogen, quite frankly. I'm hoping that the company, which is called Monolith, is so successful in the production of their product, which is carbon black, that they'll someday expand and we can get enough hydrogen to convert unit one. So we could, we could then, at that point in time, have Sheldon Station also being a zero emitter as far as carbon goes. Here, you can see just a little bit of a breakdown. Same information, 42% carbon-free for NPBD. That compares to 31% on a national basis. And again, some of the pictures and percentages of where our energy comes from across the fleet of generating resources that we have. You don't have this one in your, this slide in your stack because it is very confidential. In the Southwest Power Pool, which NPBD, Omaha Public Power District, and the Lincoln Electric System are all members of, we do things a little differently than we used to do in the old days. In the old days, each individual utility operated what we called a control area. And within that control area, we were responsible for matching our generation to the load on a second-by-second basis. Today, in the Southwest Power Pool, all of the generators, instead of worrying about just their load, we bid our generation into the Southwest Power Pool market. So every morning, if you're a generator and you enter into the SPP computer, what's, what plants are available, how much can they generate, how quickly can they move up or down, and most importantly, how much do they cost? If you're a load-serving entity, and NPBD is also that, we do both functions, you give SPP an hour-by-hour load forecast. How much is your load gonna be on an hour-by-hour basis? So then the SPP computer starts matching things up. It says, okay, for this hour, I've got to have X amount of generation. They now sorted the list of available generators in decreasing order of price, and they start at the bottom. So they pick up the lowest-cost plant first. Well, maybe that, maybe that got them 5% of what they needed for that hour. They keep going up the stack, and that's why we call it a generation stack. I said we keep going up the stack. On this graph, you're actually moving to the right because that's how prices increase. And when they finally get to the point where they have selected enough power plants to meet the load, that's what we call clearing the market. And the price of that last generator is what all the generators that were selected gets paid, and that's what the load pays. Now, why do we go through that? Why do we go, it sounds kind of complicated. Well, it helps ensure that the load in the entire SPP footprint is served with the lowest-cost energy. And that's a big advantage. I think the last year, I was on a call today with SPP, and $300 and some million benefit last year in fuel savings. So it's a, it's a huge benefit. Now, if you're a low-cost generator and you're gonna get paid that last price that it took to get that last generator, what do you get to bring home? Pretty good margin, okay? So it's very important where you end up or where you're at on this generation stack. The farther to the left you are, the better off you are. And you can see right there, Cooper Nuclear Station, having the lowest energy costs. And Cooper Nuclear Station always gets dispatched. Right behind it, Gerald Gentleman Station. And then we move up the stack, to the right, Sheldon Station. Sheldon's smaller, Sheldon's older, it's not quite as efficient. And then to the Beatrice Power Station, I would expect Beatrice to be more expensive because Beatrice is not what we call a baseload plant. Beatrice is what we call an intermediate load plant in that it doesn't run all the time. It's a quick-start plant. You can have Beatrice up and running in a matter of, well, if it's just the combustion turbines, 10 minutes, quite frankly. But there's a trade-off. The more flexible a power plant is, turning it on, shutting it down, being very flexible to follow load, typically, it costs more. But the bottom line here, from our customers' perspective, is NPBD's resources are extremely economical and dispatch very, very well in the market, and that's a big plus for our customers. So why long-term contracts? Well, I said earlier, we're a very capital-intensive organization. We need to be able to go to the markets and borrow, you know, it's not, it's not unheard of for us to go to the markets in a year and borrow $100 million for projects, whether it's transmission projects, generation projects. And what's our collateral? Because people want to be paid back. State law prevents us from mortgaging any of our assets. The only thing that we have as collateral is the revenue that we get from our customers. And that's why the bonds that we issue are called revenue bonds. And so we have to be able to prove to those investors that we've got a stream of revenue that's going to come in for a period that's long enough to service the debt. And so for someone that says, well, why can't I just have a short-term contract? Well, in the public power model, where you're trying to minimize prices and you're trying to take advantage of tax-free financing, which is one of the advantages of public power, you really have to have that long-term commitment. It also helps us to make the right decisions on what kind of power plants to have. If I've got someone who says, well, I don't want a five-year contract, for example, and we've got to build generation, what kind of a power plant am I probably gonna build? Well, I'm probably gonna build a less capital-intensive one, maybe a peaker. That's another term that we use, which is basically a jet engine that we can start and stop. Or I might build another intermediate-class plant, but that's more expensive. And I won't be able to serve that customer at the lowest possible cost. But the trade-off is, if we go for the lower price with the baseload units like Cooper Nuclear Station and Gerald Gentleman Station, more expensive, longer commitment. You can see, we've talked about the tax-exempt financing. Again, rated A to A+. That is a huge benefit for our customers. And the rating agencies like our generation best. You know, it's not unusual for them to be rating utilities right now that are mostly coal. And if you are in that situation, you know, you've got some pretty tough decisions to make, particularly if this Clean Power Plan actually makes it through the courts. We did come up with two contract options for our customers, option A and option B, but I have to tell you that as of today, I've not seen any interest in option B. Option B actually allowed customers to reduce their take from us up to 50% for any reason whatsoever. But there was a premium associated with that, a 3% rate premium. And again, that speaks to the uncertainty that we would have with a customer like that. If someone has that ability, I probably can't assume that they're gonna be with us with all of their load for the entire 20-year period. I'm gonna have to make some assumptions that maybe we lose 10% of the load or 20% of the load. And what that results in is suboptimal planning from a resource planning perspective. And consequently, costs go up. All the customers so far have been looking at option A. That's got a 20-year term. You can put in up to 10% renewables behind the meter if you want to. This third bullet is something that I don't think I've ever seen in a contract in the United States. And that's actually a performance standard. We're asking folks to make a long-term commitment to us. But we're now coming back and saying, if you're willing to make a long-term commitment to us, we should make a long-term guarantee to you on what our prices are gonna do.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Under option B, though, it says that there's no exit fee if you wanted to, in your pamphlet.
Okay.
So why ain't there no exit fee in A as well?
Well, actually, as long as we meet the performance criteria, you can't exit. So as long as we stay below, below the 45th percentile of the, and CFC is an acronym for Cooperative Financing Corporation. They do an annual survey of over 800 utilities around the country, and they come out with a rank. And so we know exactly where we're at. And so what we negotiated with the customers is, as long as we were below that level, you would not be able to reduce during the 20-year term. Now, the other part of that is bullet number four. 45%, quite frankly, I don't really think about that because traditionally, NPBD has been in the bottom quartile of that survey, the best 25th percentile. And so what we negotiated with the customers was, if we live in the bottom quartile, which is good for customers, let's say that we end a year in the 23rd percentile, that 2 percentile difference, we split it with the customers. We bank a point, the other point really, I guess, gets thrown away. We don't claim the entire credit. And we bank that. So that down the road, if something significant happens and we end up in the 46th percentile one year, we could pull a point out of our bank and still keep all of our customers. But quite frankly, the bigger the bank gets, the more years customers have enjoyed extremely low electricity rates being in the bottom quartile. And option A is the lowest-cost option because we believe we'll be able to perform at that level. The certainty that customers staying with us is important. And that's, that's one of the main drivers for public power, low cost, high reliability. This is what my staff calls the swim lanes. And what this is, is really a graphical representation of that CFC data. If you look at the green line, that is the bottom quartile of the CFC data since 2004. The black line is where NPBD has been during that period. And the numbers are the numerical representation. You can see that in 2008, we got as low as the 17.5 percentile. In 2012, we got out of the bottom percentile, the 29, we went to 31. 2014, we're back down to 27.6. I'm pretty confident today, well, next year, when we get the 2015 data, I'm pretty confident that right now, we're back in the bottom quartile. And what we've done is we've taken our budgets, we do a six-year rate outlook, a rate forecast, and we've translated that into what we think things are going to be. And that's represented by the dash-black line. The other two lines, the gold line and the purple line. The purple line is the median, that's the 50th percentile, and the gold line is the 45th percentile. Lot of, lot of words here, kind of an eye chart. I won't spend a lot of time on it, but it really gets into some more of the detail, the differences between option A and option B. If you've got any questions, we can certainly answer them. But I don't think it, since really nobody's asking for option B right now, it's probably worth the time to delve into it. But if, like I said, if you have questions, please let us know. What's gonna happen for 2016? You've probably read the papers. You've probably heard about the concerns that we've had because we did have a handful of customers in the Northeast give us notice that they were going to level off or reduce their take from us. NPBD looked at that and said, well, what that does is really nullifies one of the assumptions we had made over the years when it came to the collection of deferred costs. Previously, any employee that went to work for NPBD prior to 1993 got full post-retirement health benefits, medical and prescriptions. That was phased out. But as of today, we've got about a $500 billion unfunded liability on the books that we have a plan to fund in a trust fund.
500?
500 million, excuse me.
Oh, God, yeah, okay.
Well, like I said, billions, millions, I don't know, but 500 million. But the concern was that if we didn't start collecting it now, those customers that received the benefit of those employees and really who should have been paying for those costs would shift those costs to those customers that want to stay with us. And that's really not fair. So what we're proposing is an increase in production rates of 3.7%. But if a customer wants to extend with the district and we've got another 20 years to then collect that, what we would do is basically give that customer an initial credit for 2016, which would zero out the production rate increase. Which you'd be left with then is a 5.7% rate increase for transmission. But since transmission only accounts for about 10 to 15% of your bill, it's really only a 0.6% overall increase. Going forward, I think for the next several years, for those customers that extend with us, we're looking at continued, as you saw on the graph, minimal, if not zero, percent rate increases. So, yes, sir?
I guess that's part of the concern I have. We've, obviously, we go way back with NPBD.
Yes, a long time.
And I know we've had a real good relationship in the past. And, you know, I never thought we'd be having this kind of discussion because, or maybe you didn't either, I don't know.
Yeah.
And so I guess part of the concern is that, you know, you mentioned on the previous, on one of the previous slides about, you know, having the 20 years and how, you know, that's your commitment to us.
Yep.
But I guess maybe I've just been working in the legislature too long that I get cynical. You know, we also get that, I look at that 20-year commitment that, here we are right in year 15.
Right.
Being asked now to, takes another 20 years. We haven't even gotten to the end of our 20-year. And so that commitment to me has come up a little short. And, and the reason I say this because, I mean, I appreciate your explanation of the, of the different rates. If we were to renew today, you know, we're not looking at an increase.
Right.
But to me, it looks like if we don't renew today, we're looking at a penalty. And I realize it's not a penalty. But the perception to me is that we're gonna, if we don't extend 20 years out, five- five years before our contract is up, we're going to have to pay a higher rate for the remaining five years until we do, assuming we agree to a twenty year. So I guess that's part of, I guess, the bad, not I said bad feeling, but
Sure.
It's just sort of the uneasiness with this process where, I mean, I'm a big guy, typically don't feel like getting strong-armed. But, you know, to me, it kind of feels like that's sort of the, I don't even want to call it a tactic. It's just the reality is to me, it just makes me, I get a little uneasy being in a position where, you know, we didn't get to the twenty years. If we don't extend, this year, we're looking at an increase in the rate, which we wouldn't have if we do extend for another twenty years. But what guarantee do we have? We'll get to twenty more years. And at some point in those twenty years, you're going to come back and say, okay, there's another group over here left and I realize they play, they pay a penalty or they're winding down to fifty percent.
Yep.
And how do we know we're not going to have to be in the same situation at that point? Saying, okay, we realize we're only ten years in, but if you don't renew another twenty years. So I feel like you were chasing the car.
Well, let me-
And the problem is, you know, the dog chases the car, which is great. But what's he going to do with the car when he catches it?
Yeah. Well, let me break it down a little bit. First of all, let's talk about the collection of the post-retirement health benefits. You're not the first one that has felt that, gee, are we being penalized? Are we being pushed? But I had a situation where if we didn't do this, number one, I couldn't just raise the rates for that handful of customers in the Northeast that have decided to level off and reduce. We certainly talked to rate council, rate experts. And quite frankly, if we had have done that, that would have fell flat on its face. Because they have the same right to the exact same rate that every other customer has on this existing contract. You just can't collect costs from one customer, set of customers and not everybody. So that brings you to the next decision point in that, well, if you don't raise rates and do this credit mechanism to try and collect from those folks, what that means is those folks get to walk away from an obligation that they incurred. And the only other folks left to pick that up are the folks that want to extend with us. And I just, I couldn't swallow that, to be honest with you. Because it was unfair to the people that wanted to extend with us.
So I guess my question is, why isn't, why aren't those people leaving? Why was there no penalty in place? Or, I mean, you have a mechanism here under Plan A and Plan B. Where under Plan B, there is a, you have to, you have a penalty in place to, so you don't share that burden with everyone else if someone were to exit. But there wasn't that in this case.
There was an assumption that we were going to, that the customers that we had when the costs were incurred would be the same customers when we started to collect those costs. Now, why didn't we start collecting those costs a long time ago? I mean, we knew in nineteen ninety-three that there were going to be costs for these folks. Well, we were paying for part of them. We paid on a what's called a pay-as-you-go basis as folks retired, okay? But what we wanted to do is make sure that there was a trust fund funded by the time the last employee walked out the door that had those benefits for them, okay? But we had a long time to do that. Because the last employee probably doesn't walk out the door until twenty, thirty, something. I forget what it was. And every time, and you folks probably experienced this in your ratemaking, any time you start collecting costs early on, what's it do to rates? It puts pressure on rates. And so there was this, quite frankly, believe it or not, I think there was an honest desire to not put pressure on rates in the early years because of an assumption that folks would be, customers would be around for all the remainder of the years. And that's turned out to be incorrect. Believe me, I looked long and hard for other mechanisms on how we could collect that. And quite frankly, we came up empty, other than do it this way. So I appreciate your concern. But when I put it in the balance, I have a hard time looking customers in the eye that want to stay with us and say, well, by the way, you get to pay these other guys' costs. That just, that doesn't fly with me. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I'm not trying to beat up on you.
No, that's fine.
It might feel that way.
It's a fair question.
But it's just, I know this, again, something that we weren't expecting to have.
Can I, can I address the other part, too?
I don't even remember what it was, but, yeah.
You know, you've got a twenty-year contract.
Oh, right, right.
And let's put the, let's just forget about the post-retirement health benefits. Remember what I said about having collateral? The only collateral I have is your contracts. So if, if we didn't have any of these other issues and we were cruising along, let's even say it was a twenty-five or thirty-year contract, it doesn't matter, would I ever be able to let that contract run all the way down to twenty-nine years before I came back and said, well, you know, it's another year? No. Because I wouldn't be able to borrow any money in the capital markets. Because there's no guarantee to the bondholders that there's going to be a revenue stream. So even absent all this stuff with post-retirement health benefits, and if you go back and you look at the history of contract renewal, renewals, I don't think the district and its customers have ever let contracts go to the end. Because we can't. Because we've got to, we've got to keep enough length out in front of us to satisfy the lending community that we have that revenue stream. Now, I was over at Perennial this morning and one of their board members had a good idea. He said, well, you're doing this really wrong, he says. Why don't you stagger these renewals? Why don't you have customers on different periods? So you don't have, you wouldn't have this problem. I said, that's right. But you'd never want me to do that. You'd never let me do that, if you think about it. Because particularly on the rural side, they have the Nebraska GNT, which is how they negotiate their contract. They like to use the size of the organization, the size of the load when it comes to negotiating contracts. So I'd love to do that. And maybe then, we could not have this issue about having to come back to you with five years left and extend a contract. But I don't think after customers thought about it, they would be really in favor of staggering. Because they'd start to feel like we're trying to divide and conquer, quite frankly.
And actually, the current contract in place now was discussed and worked through prior to its term.
And I get that, I mean, that's common. And I think it's just sort of a juxtaposition of the timing. And then the discounted rate, if you, if you go on another twenty years, I think it's not one or the other. I think it's sort of the timing of those side by side.
And in the new contract, there is wording that does discuss how we will openly share all of the debt and the maturities so that everybody is crystal clear throughout that contract time period. So this does not come forward again at the end of the next word. So we've tried to clarify your concern.
I think that was one of the biggest issues. It was a communication issue and that folks didn't realize. I mean, they might have, I mean, there's certainly folks that go through our financials, go through our rate proposals, who might have known that. But for the vast majority of customers, probably wasn't on their radar screen, to be honest with you. And then for us to come back and say, well, we really do need to collect this, that caused, that caused an issue, I understand.
Ellen?
I apologize for asking the question I should know. This is my first time as a councilperson addressing this issue. The employees that you're talking about regarding the healthcare benefits, they're your employees?
Yes, they are.
Okay, all right. So basically, the whole angst driving this is you fail to appropriately collect your obligations for your healthcare program?
There was a reason why they didn't start collecting, or we didn't start collecting until now, as I said earlier. Anytime you start collecting, that puts pressure on rates. And we're very sensitive to rates, quite honestly. And there was an assumption that all of the customers that we had when those folks were earning those benefits would still be with us when we started to collect for those benefits. Now, when the handful of customers in the Northeast decided to level off and reduce, that assumption went out the window.
That meant they left the contract. They're not going to buy power from you anymore.
They are reducing their take or letting off their take. Now, the other thing, if you want to, you know, dig in a little bit more for the, if there's any accountants in the room, believe it or not, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASB, did not require governmental entities, and they, I don't know if you guys have run into this, but we weren't required to even recognize that on our balance sheet until like two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine. After the two thousand and eight financial meltdown, a lot of changes occurred. And so you got to recognize, and once you recognize it on the balance sheet, you have to have a plan to fund it.
But you had all these employees, you have the allegation, and you chose to ignore it for twenty-some years?
I would say we didn't choose to ignore it. There was a plan in place. We paid on a pay-as-you-go basis for folks that were retiring. And we always recognized that we have to collect it. But we always assumed that the wholesale customers that were with us then would be with us in the future, and so there'd be a good match-up. And we could collect those costs then. So it wasn't ignoring it as much as, well, gee, we want to stretch this out and so we can minimize the pressure on rates.
I think, I think part of the angst maybe is that, you know, we always get pressure from citizens regarding our utilities and utility rates. And we just didn't vote in or not, you know, the last meeting to address that. And, you know, there were times where we saw double-digit increases to the point where we didn't even pass along the entire rate, rate increase. We ate parts of that.
Sure.
And we still get beat up for increasing their rates because people don't realize we could have increased them even more just to break even. And so it's sort of like, we've been doing everything we can to keep those down. And then I think maybe why Ellen's issue is, is that maybe there were things that could have been done on NPPD's end to alleviate some of that pressure that's now being put on us moving forward. And I noticed a lot of you, on your one chart, the line gets flat. But, you know, again, I'm cynical. That line just happens to go flat right at the point where we're trying to negotiate a new contract. And I, I believe you. I'm not saying that the numbers aren't right. It's just that we've sat here and have approved double-digit increases in electrical rates not that long ago. And I guess that's where we get hammered. And I think part of it is because we feel like we don't have any control over that. We can lower property taxes, increase property taxes. We can do that because, because we, you know, we just, we can cut costs or we can increase spending. We have control over that, and that's a policy decision. And the council is the one that makes the policy decision. But when it comes to these rates, the policy decision isn't, doesn't have the same level of flexibility. Because if you're going to maintain your infrastructure at a certain level of quality and expand for as those needs grow, it, we're told, okay, now, now as a wholesaler, the rate is going to go up X percent. Or it may not, but typically it goes up more than it doesn't. You know, I think the frustration from the council that I hear is that they don't really feel they have a choice. Because the alternative is, we don't do those improvements or we keep eating it and making that revenue up or making up that expense somewhere else. And it's just the options aren't there, like I think a policymaker would like to see.
Well, can I, can I make a pitch for one? That's one of the reasons why I think if folks really think about it, the performance guarantee and the incentive to be in the bottom quartile is a win. Because if we don't maintain performance, then you've got options, quite frankly. As long as we do maintain performance and we live in that bottom quartile, you're going to have some of the best rates and continue to have some of the best rates. Because quite frankly, if I go back, other than, no, I can't. We go back to the swim.
But you do have a statutory requirement to produce the, to provide the cheapest kilowatt per hour, correct?
We have a-
They loosen it over the last few years.
We have, you know, if we take a project, if we want to do a new power supply project, we have to take that to the Power Review Board.
Right.
And they are always looking at, is that the most economical project? Is there any duplication? You know, there's criteria. But that's the production piece.
Right.
You know, that's a single project. What we're talking about here on this program is the entire rate, what you actually pay, which includes transmission, all of the other costs, you know, overheads, everything else. And so I honestly do think that one of the advantages of this new proposal is that in exchange for a commitment from the customers, there actually is a performance guarantee, and we've never seen that before. And I think that's a huge improvement of what you've had in the past.
The difference between those two lines, between where we are and that forty-fifth percentile, is only point eight cents. It looks like it's a big gap. It is fairly small, point eight cents, which is one double-digit. It's about ten to eleven, twelve percent difference. It is not, it is holding us accountable and keeping us focused on low, low costs.
Sid, is your question?
My understanding, Gerald Gentlemen is like about the cleanest coal-fired plant in the country, correct? And talking about that projected line, should the EPA emission standards somehow affect Gerald Gentlemen? And it would have to either be shut down or, you know, converted to gas or whatever?
Right.
How would that affect that?
You know, I don't see, I don't see that in our future. Right now, for example, scrubbers, there is nothing on the horizon right now that would force us to put scrubbers on Gentlemen Station. Even the Clean Power Plan, a Clean Power Plan focuses on carbon. Scrubbers don't do anything for carbon. There is no control technology. That's kind of the frustrating part for utilities. There is no control technology that you can put on power plants to take care of carbon. We are excess about five million megawatt hours of energy per year that we sell into the market, okay? One of the most viable strategies, if the Clean Power Plan comes to fruition, is not to shut Gentlemen down, but to generate less, quite frankly, to meet the targets. Now, that means less of that margin coming in on those off-system sales, right? But I can guarantee you that we won't be the only utility that does that. There'll be numerous other utilities that reduce generation. What will that do to the supply of energy in the market? Drops it. What's that going to do to the price? It'll send the price up. I can't tell you how much it's going to send the price up. Maybe it'll send the price up to more than offset what we lose in the margins on off-system sales. Maybe it won't. But I do not see those types of huge investments in our future, to be honest with you. So wrap this up. You've already given me plenty of time. Going back to this, yeah, we've talked a lot about price today. We've talked about the cost of energy. But quite frankly, we do provide more than just a commodity at a low price. The partners in the automated meter reading system in the database, economic development, we have the economic development rate. We were just in a meeting the other day talking about data centers. That's one of our big pushes right now, to get a data center in what we call the first tier around the Omaha-Lincoln metro area. We've been advised by the Nebraska Department of Economic Development that these data centers like to be close to their ecosystem, their support ecosystem. And so getting a data center farther out now in the state of Nebraska is probably less likely than capitalizing on an area like Seward where we can put the NPPD economic development rate to work, which is going to be lowered at the November board meeting. Energy efficiency incentives, energy audits, we've worked well together, storm recovery, operations assistance, all the equipment, parts, engineering services. So it really is a package deal as opposed to just the low-cost electricity. Low cost or long-term versus short-term? The analogy I use here, quite frankly, is Warren Buffett. He's been very successful over the years. What's his philosophy always been? Take the long-term view. Are there short-term opportunities out there with low wholesale prices? Absolutely. But it's not risk-free, nor is it necessarily easy to get into that business. And we'll be reacting on a daily basis to that. And so long-term, low risk versus short-term risk, you can read through the bullet items there. From an NPPD perspective, as I said earlier, the contract that has a price-performance guarantee, you then got access and you've got capacity for your future load growth. You know, you're very close to the Lincoln metropolitan area. I'm sure that economic development plays heavily into your future plans. And we think that we could help with that significantly. Low cost and diverse generation, and again, more than- Low cost and diverse generation, and again, more than a commodity. So with that, questions?
Any questions from the council? Our comments, if I may?
Where do we go from here?
As far as the city? Um, well, we have, we wanted to then have opportunity to present, if you've known, if you've noticed on the next item, we, um, Bruce will explain, we'll have someone that will discuss, um, you know, consulting for, for, like, what they call a complete power supply evaluation. And that'll be the next presentation. And then, the council will have, uh, we don't have a contract yet, do you?
Um, actually, there's a contract on the street.
Oh, is there? Okay.
It's gonna be at tomorrow's meeting. We have a special board meeting in Grand Island tomorrow, uh, where the NPPD board will take up this rate issue. Um, as, as, uh, Ken indicated, we've made some wording changes to try and accommodate some of the concerns that some of the customers have. But there's a contract out there, uh, ready to be executed at any time.
And so, sometime between now and the end of the year, um, I believe we have it till the end of the year, correct?
Yep.
Um, the council will then be presented with that contract to extend the, well, basically to start a new twenty-year period. And then...
In five years. Because the new contract wouldn't start till 2019.
No, twenty sixteen starts.
Yeah, starting way.
It does affect it in twenty sixteen. It's effective right from twenty sixteen.
Oh, okay. So it really is a twenty-year starting next year.
Yep, it is.
I thought we had to eat up the first five, and then it went to the twenty.
No, it starts in twenty sixteen.
So that would be one option, and then you'll hear what other options may be out there as well. Um, now, if you, if the council were to decide not to, um, start a new twenty-year contract, then, um, even if they don't go with anyone else, you, you would just continue, but you'd have the higher rate than if you would've extended the twenty-year. And so, and, and, but, it also gives the council the remaining five years, but you don't, don't even take it all, but you'd have five years left on its current contract to decide what you would want to do. It would just be a little bit higher rate.
Are we locked in for the, the five years we got left?
Yes, there's a twenty-year contract, and we're fifteen in. So there'd be five years left if nothing is done. That would've been run its course. But, um, but again, you'd have this option to go new twenty at some point. I assume if we waited two years and then decided to do twenty, that twenty-year contract would still be available?
Yeah, twenty-year contract.
At that point. So you just could shave off the remaining year, two, or three on that contract. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
And has there been a comparability study? Is there some way we can see what York went up? Yeah, I don't know if you guys, do you guys take care of York's service?
Yes, we do.
You know, I like to see comparability.
Bruce supplied that to me. I don't know if you sent it to anybody.
Yeah.
He did, yeah.
Take a look at, at that and see, and I believe there'll be other information coming forward that'll kind of give you perspective of what the, what the landscape currently looks like.
And one more question for Chris. I just, it's just a hard thing to chew whenever you're, you know, your debits are coming down every year, starting to go forward, and the customer still hasn't absorbed it. That's just, it's hard to chew. Um, you know, in five years, you can see your trend charts, you know, they're not going up, they're going down.
Well, they're flat.
And then your energy, you know, your, your, your costs on your energy that produces going down is by your charts after what you've done to them by your charts here. Um, but, you know, here it is, it comes back to the customer again. It, it's gonna be a hard sell to our customers, which is the citizens of Seward, that, you know, where does it stop? And then with the renewable energy, you know, that's going around, we see the wind dimes, those are here all the time. And are those customers gonna start exiting you more too? And is that going to hurt the rate as well, as those customers put up more of these wind tower turbines and don't need your power supply? Because you're paying for them now, for their gener, you know, their energy that's produced. Are we gonna get hurt for that too later? Because you're gonna have less customers that, because they're gonna start bailing on you too on that.
Actually, right now, to be honest with you, the small wind generation facilities, they don't compete. Even the large facilities, uh, without federal subsidies, they don't compete. The only thing driving the wind industry right now, and it's one of the reasons the wind industry fights so hard for the subsidies, is the subsidies. So...
You know, I'm just, I'm just still kind of concerned, because in five years, where are we gonna be? There's gonna be more wind dimes.
And I think John's, John's point is that, I think you do build in, I believe, in, in your option, in the option you presented, there's the, up to ten percent, can be renewable. And that doesn't have to be wind, it could be solar or something else. But I, I assume you're, you're including that in your calculation.
We do.
If everyone did ten percent, where would you still be with the rate? So I assume a lot of that is, is addressed in, in the, in the rate, uh, engineering, if that's fair.
It is, it is.
Okay. Yep, thanks, John.
I'll say one.
No, you're good. No, you're fine. Any other questions?
When you get a copy of the contract. Uh, I'm asking that you send it out prior to whatever meeting it's gonna be at.
Oh, absolutely.
And if I can get a copy of the current one too, I'd like a copy of the current one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else on that item? There's nothing else on that item, and thank you, NPPD, for coming out this evening, chat with us. Um, moving on, going on into, um, item number eleven, and Bruce can kind of give you the background on, on this.
Okay, well, this is the consideration for consulting services agreement with JK Consulting, um, for providing a complete power supply evaluation. Um, I invited John Kraske of JK Energy Consulting to provide a proposal to us. There's, you know, when we're talking about this contract, there are other options out there besides NPPD. And, you know, we really don't know where we'd be at if we went on the market. And John's been in the business for a lot of years. I've actually, disclaimer is, I've worked with John for about twenty-five years on different things and through the powerful and things like that. And so that's why I invited John to, uh, give us a proposal. This just gives you the opportunity, if you want to, to go out and take a look and get some ideas and get some proposals from other companies that could supply us with our wholesale energy in the future.
I was kind of hoping you put that, one of their, their slides back up.
I'm sorry, I, I, it, it's not a big deal if you can't. They got the handout, second point. Is that okay?
I'll just, I'll just... No, I, I think, I, I think it helped my explanation quite a bit, and I think I ran out of copies, so.
Here you go.
Do you know him? Yeah. I'm sorry about that.
So, and then part of it is, you know, our power costs to the community are gonna be in the next twenty years. We spend over six million dollars a year right now, so you're looking at a hundred and twenty-plus million dollars for our power over the next twenty years. So, that's one of the reasons why I thought we should at least talk to John and see what he could offer us if we wanted, if we wanted to look at other options.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce. Mayor, members of the council. Um, as Bruce said, my name is John Kraske. Um, you have a copy of my resume in front of you, and as you can see, my name is pronounced exactly the way it's spelled. So, um, I, I guess the first thing I wanted to say is, I'm probably, and as Bruce noted, I, that made me feel really old, and Bruce said, we've been working together for about twenty-five years. I joined a utility in Nebraska, the Department Energy Agency of Nebraska, when I was a college student in nineteen ninety. And throughout my career, had worked in the power industry. Took a full-time job at Meane in nineteen ninety-two. They didn't have the post-retirement benefits that Meane, that NPPD does. But I'm, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be in this profession, uh, to meet great people like Bruce and, and quite grateful to the folks from NPPD. I have a lot of respect for NPPD as an organization. They're a completely different organization than they were in nineteen ninety-two. And I mean that as an absolute compliment. Gene Watson's the one. Um, he was their former general counsel. When I was, Meane, we had a number of disputes. I think, I, I, in going through Pat's presentation, I've seen this presentation before, I would say that there was probably only one statement in there I disagreed with. And, and there was one other entity that offered a, a price guarantee contract, and that was Meane, that it was a ten-year contract, that had a five-year out. If they could, if you could demonstrate a lower price contract from another supplier that's demonstrated by an engineer or an analyst, then you could terminate it. But that was ten-year agreement. They don't offer it anymore, so.
I stand corrected.
No, and, and I, and quite frankly, um, there are a lot of consultants that will go through this and say, well, that's wrong, and that's wrong, and that's wrong. I can't do that. NPPD is a great organization. They do a very good job of what they do. I asked them to bring one, uh, ask your, your clerk. John, no. Ask John over here to make one slide. And I think this boils down to the decision that you need to make, is whether you're gonna hire me or sign the NPPD contract. And I'm quite frankly ambivalent whether you, whether you hire me or you sign the NPPD contract. Now, like I said, I might sound like a terrible sales job. I don't pay the rates here in Seward. I'm not the one that's on the hook, uh, paying. And when I say on the hook, I mean that, there, there's both directions on that. You don't, you're not receiving a commitment from NPP, I'm not receiving a commitment from NPPD to supply me for the next twenty years, and I'm not financially liable for that, other than Lincoln, at KLES rates, I have my issues with them occasionally. But, um, frankly, it, I'm, I'm as neutral an arbiter on this as anybody you're gonna find. My goal, it, it's, it's, my mission statement is to provide independent, objective advice to consumers and producers of energy. I, a lot of engineering firms that do my kind of work will, um, have a division of their engineering firm that designs power plants. Or they may have very tight relationships, almost, I'll say, uh, conflict of interest relationships with power suppliers. I, I don't have any wholesale entities as in my client base. I don't work with any, like, Meane, I don't work with, uh, OPPD, NPPD, and I don't design power plants. I don't work with, I, I, I just don't do that. I think the decision that you have to make, and this is just my, this is free advice, if you, if you don't hire me, it is illustrated on this slide. The, where the market is right now, there are short-term savings. NPPD's acknowledged that. Um, it is a short-term arrangement. It's utilizing surplus generation in the SPP. There are risks associated with those arrangements. I like, I, I like analogies. And the best analogy I've come up with, and it's not a perfect one, is that the city of Seward has a doctor who said, you're a person, or you're a family of four. And you have a doctor who said, you're gonna live forever. I've given you medication, I've given you whatever, you're gonna live forever, you're gonna operate this electric system forever. You have to live in a certain subdivision in a certain city. And you have a, a lead, and every house in that subdivision and in that city is the same. That's three bedrooms, two bathrooms, a living room, twelve hundred square feet, and I will call it two thousand square feet, um, one-third of an acre lot. You have a lease that goes through twenty-twenty-two, okay? What included in that lease is everything on this side of the, of the, of the apples, we'll say. Your, your landlord is coming to you and saying, look, I can extend your lease for twenty years from two thousand sixteen. And I will continue to provide all of these things to you. If you don't sign the twenty-year lease, um, I'm going to have to recover certain costs that I've incurred in providing you this house over the last sixteen years. And I'm going to have to raise your rent between now and twenty-twenty-two. And now that's subject to rate, like, uh, a rate proceeding and, and some other things. They can't charge you more than it costs them to provide that. But your, your rent, under either, under the new scenario, your rent can't go up higher than forty-five percent, forty-fifth percentile, what anybody in town is paying for rent, for rent. Here's the issue, though. Next-door neighbors, they were able to move. Guy across the street died. There's two houses for sale in the, or for lease in your neighborhood. You've heard from other people that the house across the street is offering a, a lower price, a lower price rent for a short period of time. Guy next door, he's trying to lease his house out for a, a little bit lower, except they're not providing a lot of this stuff. They can only provide you a lease through twenty, for twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. The question is, do you want to take that risk knowing that you're gonna run this system forever? That you're gonna live forever? That you're gonna need a house with two thousand square feet? Now, I think the big apples and oranges, differences between the short-term and long-term. NPPD, if the, if the homeowners association says, and I'll call them the government, take the federal government, homeowners association says, you can't have a brown house anymore, you have, you have to paint your house green. So, NPPD is going to paint the house green, including the rent. Pipes go bad, they're gonna come in and replace the pipes. It's a, it's a hands-off arrangement. You buy the house across the street, you may have to hire somebody else to change the pipes, or to, to change the plumbing. You may have to hire a third party, or the, the person you buy from says, well, there's gonna be an adder if you need the house, paint the house green. Which situation are you more comfortable with? You can't find out how much those folks, you just have rumors about what those folks, what you would pay for rent if you moved. Or if you terminated your lease and went across the street. Where I can help you, if you want to go down the road of determining that, is I can help you find out what those lease payments are. I can help you find out, is the plumbing included? Is the yard work included? Is painting the house green when the government, when the homeowners association tells you to paint the house green? Is that included? And how, if it's not, how much is that all that gonna cost? And as I said, I really, I have a great relationship with NPPD. I have great relationships with a lot of utilities. And I think ultimately, where I can help you is to say, this is what the difference in those two lease payments is. And then make, then put it back on you, the folks who are paying that, that lease for the next six years, twenty years, however long it is, which house do you want to live in? So, like I said, I may, I, I'm not, I'm not very good with the hard sell. And frankly, if, if you decide you're comfortable with the apple, I'll get to my car, I'll go home. Bruce and I'll still be friends. We'll have lunch every once in a while. Um, if you go with your, uh, if you want to find out what the price differences between the two, I'll still have lunch with Bruce, I'll still have lunch with NPPD. I'll help you figure out what those numbers are, what that cost difference is. And you can make an informed decision, knowing what the difference in those rent payments is. So, I've been doing this for twenty years, more than twenty years, as Bruce pointed out. I've been doing this for a couple of other cities. I, I think if you talk to, to NPPD or anybody else that's worked with me on those processes, they'll tell you I'm fair and impartial, that I'm not sitting here bad-mouthing NPPD, or bad-mouthing OPPD, or bad-mouthing anybody else in this process. It's an objective decision that comes down to, what do you want to do? The great thing about public power, I hope NPPD agrees with this, it's your decision. You don't have a public service commission, or if you like the Warren Buffett analogy, they also, Warren Buffett happens to own the utility that serves most of Iowa. Over there, your customer, Mid-American Energy, a retail customer, you have no say in what your rates are. You have no say in what your power resources are. All you have to say is, you get a bill, and you send a check to Warren Buffett. And you can bite the bill at the public service commission, but their objective is to make sure that the utility recovers enough money, and you pay a fair pay. Public power is your decision. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. You have a scope of services that I provided, that outlines the services I would provide if you chose to go this route. Uh, has proposed fee, a schedule. It's, the initial proposal I had was a little bit earlier dates, but, um, in talking to Bruce, I think we can meet the schedule. And if you choose to have this evaluation done, have a decision made by the end of the year, so that you can either sign the new NPPD agreement, stay on, stay on the existing agreement through the end of its term, or terminate that existing agreement and exercise some of the reduction options that exist in that agreement.
Well, I do appreciate you coming this evening, you know, when Bruce first, um, brought this to my attention. This is obviously a big decision. You know, it's a twenty-year commitment, and there's a, and it's a big, there's a big chunk of, of what we provide as well as spend for the community. And having, for me, what sold me on the idea of having you at least present was, there's a lot of information that I felt we just didn't have. And, you know, when you do see other entities, um, opting out, you know, you, you wonder, you always, do they know something we don't know, which I don't know if that's the case or not? But you do start to wonder what's driving that. And, and at least getting the information, um, for me, i- is what makes this conversation at least worthwhile. And Chris, did you have something to add?
Well, I'm just looking at his, uh, proposal that he threw in front of us, and I guess my, my, my only concern when I look at the proposal is that as we go through the schedule, and essentially, we're not gonna see his findings until December fifteenth, which would be our last meeting of the year. And, uh, at that, at that same point, we obviously would have to be making a decision based off of his findings or NPPD.
Well, we also have an option of, of not doing anything and just continuing with the current, remaining five years of the NPPD contract. but we can still revisit it next year. You just have the higher rate that you wouldn't get the discount if you were to extend it twenty years. So, you actually have three options at that point. But, but my guess is that, and I don't know how quickly, what is the turn? Like, if you came before us on the fifteenth and said, you know, here's all the information, and I assume there'll be NDA, NDB, NDC, and, and as well as NPPD would be in that mix. And would you give a recommendation as to the one you would suggest? Or are you just simply providing the information and then say, here you go, and you guys decide?
My, my general approach, and I'll just say the approach I followed was Beatrice, is I basically went in there with two recommendations. If the apple, if you wanna buy an apple, this is the direction you go. Here's the cost difference, if you want, if you want the orange. Here's the cost difference, here are the risks. Here's the cliff that you're gonna go off, and when you're gonna go off that cliff. Here are some of the factors that'll play into those question marks, but here's the cost difference. And, and basically show out what difference, what percentage difference was between the two. And said, if you want short-term savings and are willing to take this risk, this risk, this risk, this risk, then this would be who you'd go with. And, and they are in the process right now of deciding whether they wanna buy a bushel of apples or a bushel of oranges.
Now, with that said, do you, if on the fifteenth, you have these options, and let's say you're recommending, or give a couple of recommendations to choose from, and, and the council decides to go with something other than the NPPD contract, will there be another contract there at that moment to sign or approve? Or do we need to start another process?
There would, there, most likely, if, if that's the direction you go, there wouldn't be a final contract with the counter supplier, just because of the compressed schedule.
Sure.
We wouldn't have a contract for the other supplier. Probably the bigger question that may come up, like I said, I, I view there, really, you have, there's a lot of permutations on this. But I'd say, here are your options, sign the new contract with NPPD. Stay on the old contract with NPPD. Stay on the old contract with, stay on the old contract with NPPD and do nothing, okay? Stay on the old contract with NPPD and negotiate with a third party to supply your requirements after twenty-twenty-one, when that agreement terminates. Or the fourth one is, under your existing NPPD agreement, you have some options to reduce how much you purchase from NPPD. This is subject to litigation as well, but I'd say, conservatively, I can, I will say, you could reduce how much you buy from NPPD thirty percent in two thousand nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. So that, there would be some, if you wanted to go that fourth option, you would want, need to get notice before the end of the year of your intention to reduce those purchases. So, that's probably the, I would say all.
My next question was, and, was if, because, because we're not just being, because if the decision by the council were to go with another provider, you could obviously wait out the remaining five years.
That's correct.
And then the six years start with that.
That's correct. You'd be off NPPD and then you'd buy.
If the council decided they wanted to start as soon as possible with a new provider, then what kind of, I forgive you, I don't have a contract in front of you, but what, is there, I assume there's a notice requirement that's so many days out, is that correct? And, and then is there a penalty, or do we have to?
Actually, the, the current contract allows you to reduce your, like John had mentioned, it would be a three-year notice with a thirty percent reduction. We believe, followed by, the next year, you could do another ten percent, the next year, another ten percent. So, I'd have to lay out where those three years are. And how many years are left in the, in the term.
So, if, if the council wanted to, for example, start with a new supplier, next year, would there be, be a penalty?
There, no, we just would not.
Give you a budget contract?
It is.
There's no penalty provision in there?
The, the contract has a three-year notification, and the most that would be, or you could do five years, greater than thirty percent.
So realistically, as far as the options are concerned, then it's a lot simpler than we were thinking. Because we're going, if you decide to go with another, if the council decides to go with another provider, you're going to have to go out in five years anyway. So, so the decision wouldn't be made, so you have five years to basically shop around.
Right.
Okay, so the only question would be is if you, if you wanted different, if you wanted the hot, if you wanted a lower rate from NPPD, then you need to do that by the end of this year. Otherwise, you'd have the slightly higher rate for the next, well, for five years, assuming that rate will probably be adjusted accordingly. Is that fair? Okay, so that's a lot more simpler then. Because I was only impressed, we would have to figure something out, like while, you know, while I'm in Vegas or something.
You have, you have, regardless of every, all these realities around you, and the fact that the, that your landlord has another lease in front of you, you can live in this house that you're in through the end of twenty-twenty-one.
So, these other entities that have indicated they're going to draw down, they, they're not leaving next year. They're just giving you your three-year notice with the intent to, at the end of five years, be, be out. But during that time, they can start, they have to start ratcheting up, after three, they can start ratcheting up with someone else to make up a difference. Okay.
It's also important to understand that, yeah, there are some that are reducing handful. We've already got handfuls, a couple handfuls, that have signed the new agreement. And there are many more that are saying that they are because they value the long-term apples, the low-cost.
So, basically, you're anti-orange, don't you say?
Actually, actually, we're okay with what are your choices, the reality is, our business is.
I'm just, I'm just.
That's what we do. John did, John did a great job of explaining.
Alan, did you have something?
The cost of us doing nothing and continuing on our old contract would be about three percent.
Is that, is that?
Three point seven.
Three point seven.
Difference, three point seven.
But that's no guarantee, that's not locked down for five years.
Right, but just for next year.
Yeah, that's just for the next year. Yeah, of course, yeah.
So, it could cost us more going forward?
Yes.
Okay. But there's no, but if we sign the twenty-year deal, the rates could still go up as well?
You know, from a long-term perspective, for the next, I'd say, three or four years, I'll be also absolutely for little or no revenue.
But they could.
They could, I mean, there's no guarantees in anything, but I, I have a commitment to drive this organization into that best quartile and keep us in that best quartile. I have every intention of earning as many points, making as many points as I possibly can. And that translates to lower prices for you.
If I could, I would come. We refer to Mean, and, and if there is a, an apple that compares to us, that's a close apple, that is Municipal Energy Association of Nebraska Mean. Over a period of time, and I can get this from Bruce, our rates did go up over that period of time fifty-three point some percent, I don't remember the exact number. The apple that serves other communities in Nebraska went up ninety some percent, okay? So, all costs did go up, we've experienced it, other apples have. That, that's part of the environment we're in. But Pat, and he is focused on cost control. This new agreement with that forty-fifth and twenty-fifth percentile will keep management and the board focused on cost into the future like we. It'll hold our feet to the fire. And like I said, that difference isn't much. That point eight cents is not much at all.
That's really all it is, it's point, it's only point eight cents.
It is point eight cents.
So, basically, a little over ten percent.
Yes. Yeah, so it's not much.
It looks big on the screen.
It looks even.
You should use a different chart.
Well, he's the scale master. But, but the reality is, we are very good at apples, and that's all we do. We don't do religious.
Thank you. You know, I'll just give you a sense too, the cities of Creighton compare very by their apples from Mean. Using the apple analogy. And, and Mean's rates have gone up dramatically. And the, the last time I did a power supply study for a city who wanted to only look at apples long-term, my recommendation to them was to go to NPPD. And that was done two years ago, so. That'll give you a sense of where those two, the cost of apples.
She's always the bad guy, right?
Actually, we're very good with what John is.
I really would recommend you hire him.
Well, but he, he is unbiased, and he's, and that's, that's what, that's what you, that's what, if you're looking for, he will do a good job.
So, basically, obviously, the other questions are common from the council, otherwise, if you have an idea, if you want, do you go with, with this? I could entertain a motion, if you decide you don't want to. You can either do a motion, I guess you just do what you reject, um, so approve the rejection, like I tried last time. But you could do, just so that we have a clear record of the direction of the council wants to go, so that we, we don't have any confusion as to what the expectation is. So, I would appreciate a motion, one way or the other, if the council so chooses.
Bruce, what's your thoughts on this? I mean, you, you brought this up and talked about it, where, where you stand on this?
Well, I, we're talking about, you know, like I said, a hundred and twenty-plus million dollars that we're gonna spend over the next twenty years. So, my recommendation would be to at least hire JK Consulting, and let them at least get us the information so that the council can make a decision based on real numbers. And, you know, and again, I, I like NPPD too, you know, but Mean's apples used to be quite a bit cheaper, and now it's kinda flip-flopped. But I'm just saying, I, I think for you, for you to make a decision on a twenty-year contract that's gonna cost over a hundred and twenty million dollars, I really think you need to have that information.
And I, and I do think, like what Bruce had said, tonight, as well as in previous conversations, because it is such a big decision and a big number, you know, he, he might come back and say, hey, NPPD is the no, no-brainer choice, you'd be a fool not to go with them. And you might say, well, then why did we waste money on a consultant? But you do have the peace of mind that you know, that, and you can explain to somebody who would ask, why did you go with NPPD when some other communities are leaving? Well, you can say, here's the study, here's the recommendation, and this was the justification for why the council took the, the, took the, went the direction that it, that it did. So, you do have, it's almost like an insurance policy to make sure that you have as much information as you possibly can.
I'll make the motion go ahead with the services to accept JK Consulting, we owe this to our great peers.
We have a motion, we have a motion in a second. It is ready for the discussion. Say no, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Would you favor looking back camera, type signal which would be in social media?
Thank you to everyone this evening.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Absolutely.
I'll be getting a day or a week's orders, seems like it's signed, reading in the mail.
Okay. He knows where to find you, right?
He knows where to find me.
I haven't been to your office in quite a few years, so.
Well, yeah, I wouldn't have been there for two years.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Alan. Well, item number twelve, this is consideration agreement with Earth Networks Inc., four-place metal weather camera, weather station-related hardware and software in the wire tower. We thought we were ready for this, and we had our wires crossed a little bit on what that agreement actually said. And Kelly had some concerns about some of the verbiage in it, and so he had asked that we hold off on that tonight. So, if that's okay with the council, I would appreciate a motion to table number twelve.
Motion to deal.
Motion in a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Would you favor looking back camera, type signal which would be in social media?
Thank you.
Senator Minister's report. The only thing I wanted to add to the report, in the name of speed, is Mel worked with the state recycling department or whatever, and ended up getting a new, new use, but it's a cardboard baler, he ended up getting that for free. So, we'll have a new cardboard baler for that, it cost insane. So, I thought that was awesome, saved us about fourteen thousand dollars, so, anyway. Otherwise, like, you know, quite a few things going on. There you go, is there any questions?
Any questions for Bruce and his report?
How soon will we see Country Club?
We're hoping on the next meeting. So, we're getting closer. There's a lot of information. So, any other questions for Bruce? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to accept the Senator's report.
All right, motion in a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Would you favor looking back camera, type signal which would be in social media?
Item fourteen, any future requests for Council of General, Minister of Action? And none. Item fifteen, announcement of upcoming events. October twenty-fifth, ten AM to five PM, City Youth Center fundraiser, Fourth Street, between Highway thirty-four and South Street. October thirty-first, from four-thirty to seven, United Methodist Church Holloway Trunk and Treat, Northern Heights to Crestwood on North Fifth. November twenty-eighth, at five-thirty PM, annual holiday lighted parade. Any other announcements? Say no. Item sixteen, motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
Please register your votes.